Are there any council persons here that would like to speak before we get started? Seeing none, do we, everyone get a chance to review last month's meeting minutes? We have a motion to approve?
Let's move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. So this is a public hearing, for each case there will be one, and we ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve two minutes as a rebuttal. So as you're looking at the time, make sure you go eight minutes, and you remember you need to save two minutes for the end. We ask the public to keep their comments to two minutes unless they are representing an organization or group, and then they may have five minutes. Appeals to the decisions pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.03 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of certiorari. Your advice is seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision on the Historic Zoning Commission. The first is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda.
Chairman, we do have some changes to the agenda that might be worthwhile to go over before we get into consent. 1126 Shelton is off the agenda completely. 2306 Sunset, which is currently on consent, is off the agenda. The outbuildings and dadu policy is off the agenda. The election of officers is off the agenda. That was an error, we do that every two years, and so you will be looking at those next year.
What was the second? After 1126?
2306 Sunset Place, 1126 Shelton, outbuilding and dadu policy, and election of officers. And I believe there's maybe council members here?
Any council person want to come forward and speak? Feel free to just state your name. Oh, Colby, I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there, Colby. My sorry.
There we go. Colby Sledge, District Councilmember for District 17. I'm speaking with you on, there is a conservation overlay extension, the Belmont-Hillsborough Conservation Overlay Extension. Appreciate you allowing me to speak first. I apologize, I won't be able to be here for the full debate. This is a, this came as a request from residents on these two blocks that you're gonna, that you are going to consider. This portion of the neighborhood, of the 12 South, of the Waverly-Belmont neighborhood, had looked at various times at some sort of overlay. They do not fall into the urban design overlay that other portions of Clayton do in the Clayton Avenue UDO, nor do they fall into the Waverly-Belmont Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay that was passed by 18 months ago. So the residents there, I think over time, got together, said we would like to pursue some sort of design overlay ourselves. They landed upon, with the help of the Historic Commission, an extension going across Granny White of the Belmont-Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay, as it was going to be pretty difficult, if not impossible, to make the Waverly-Belmont NCZO contiguous with this portion. And again, they did not want to be part of the Clayton Avenue UDO. We did have, and you'll hear later about kind of the neighborhood meetings and the notice that we have, there's not 100% unanimity on this. There are a couple of residents who have preferred to be out of it. We talked, and I talked with Robin several times, about trying to get them out. The difficult thing is, both of them are not at the edge of the proposed boundaries. They're within the middle, if you can call it that, being two blocks. And I fully acknowledge that, and it has been a, I don't take it lightly at all, I've talked with the residents several times. What of those properties are, I think, is contributing, what of those properties is non-contributing. Overall, however, though, I think the resident support was there, they filled out the petitions they had, that, they quite frankly, did everything that was asked of them, and as the, I think as the department will show, it is a very heavily contributing area by percentage. So with that, I do support their, I do support their application today, and appreciate all the work that you do. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other council persons here? Okay, thank you. So let's move to consent agenda.
Application, new construction outfitting, outbuilding detached accessory dwelling unit conversion, Council District 18. Overlay Belmont-Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay, Project Lead, Melissa Baldock. 411 Bushnell Street. Application, new construction addition and outbuilding detached accessory dwelling unit, Council District 06. Overlay Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay, Project Lead, Melissa Baldock. 1005 Gilmore Avenue. Application, new construction addition. Setback determination, Council District 17. Overlay Waverly-Belmont Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay, Project Lead, Sean Alexander. Oh, are you doing it too? 1010 Lawrence Avenue. Application, new construction addition and outbuilding. Setback determination, Council District 17. Overlay Waverly-Belmont Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay, Project Lead, Sean Alexander. 1825 Fifth Avenue North. Application, demolition, Council District 19. Overlay Salem Town Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay, Project Lead, Paul Hoffman. 3613 Richland Avenue. Application, new construction infill and outbuilding, Council District 24. Overlay Richland West End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay, Project Lead, Melissa Baldock. 2809 27th Avenue South. Application, demolition, Council District 18. Overlay Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay, Project Lead, Paul Hoffman.
Okay, thank you. You've heard the consent agenda. Do you, does he on the commissioners have any questions or comments?
I do. I've read through 1921 19th Avenue South, it's just a question. It seems that we're, it's a matter of public, you know, info, that outbuildings, there's a trend of these outbuildings becoming dadus. And so it just seems, just kind of maybe appropriate, just to say, hey, you know, how, how do we get there, and, just a summary. And is that an appropriate question?
I can speak to that individual case. So in this case, the existing, when it was first went through and got approval for the outbuilding, the house itself was currently used as a duplex, and was categorized as a duplex, so legally, they could not have a third dwelling unit on it. So they wanted to get moving with the construction of the outbuilding. So they did that, and while they were doing that, they also converted the house back to single family, so that therefore, they could have the second unit in the dadu. So in this case, all along, we kind of knew, we were working with them, that they probably would be making it into a dadu, it's just that, at the time, when they were first applying for the permits, they legally couldn't have one, but now they can.
Right. Okay. I think it's just because there's, we're seeing more of that happening, that it just, it just sort of caught my eye, so thank you for the explanation.
Any other, you have something? Okay. Any other question, comments? Okay, open public hearing, anyone having other, about, anyone you want to hear on that on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing.
Move approval of consent agenda with the exception of 2306 Sunset, which has been removed.
Okay, we have a motion in second, all in favor? All opposed? And motion carries. The next thing on the agenda is the overlay recommendations.
Sorry. This is for an expansion of the Belmont-Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Overlay that Councilman Sledge discussed. It crosses 12th, you'll see that green dotted area, that's the existing overlay. It'll cross over 12th and pick up that section of Gale and Clayton that you see between the two parks there. The area includes homes constructed in the same era and styles as those found in the Belmont-Hillsborough National Register of Historic Places, and the Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay as well. The Belmont-Hillsborough Neighborhood was listed based on the significance of the neighborhood's architecture and the character. The period of significance is generally from the 1890s to the late 1940s, so that also meets what you see here in the Gale-Clayton area. The two streets retain a high degree of historic integrity, with 68% being contributing. And so because the context is the same as the Belmont-Hillsborough Neighborhood that's already listed in the National Register, staff finds the two streets are eligible for listing in the National Register as well, and therefore meet Criterion 5 of Section 17.36.120.8.3 of the ordinance. The Belmont-Hillsborough Neighborhood also voted in favor of the expansion. So staff suggests that the commission recommend a metro council that the Belmont-Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay be expanded, and recommends that the commission adopt the current design guidelines for the additional properties, finding that the properties meet the criteria of Section 17.36.120.8.3 of the ordinance. Any questions?
Does anybody else have any, any questions on? Okay. Thank you, Robin. Okay, open public hearing, if anyone would like to speak, maybe first against, if you will line up and just say, just come up and state your name and address.
My name is Jessica Jarrett. I'm at 1001 Clayton Avenue. I have concerns about the zoning changes, because my house is a little different than some of the others. The bottom left-hand corner house, it sits behind that and was originally the barn to that house, so it sits further back on the street, and because of that, has very limited space behind it, but has a quite large yard in front. And I spoke to Robin about what modifications could be made, and per the overlay, the only additions that could be made would be single-story in the front of the home, which would, I think, make the home look quite odd, and not fit into the historic look of the other homes. So I have personal objections to that, and would be interested in some kind of overlay, but not as it stands currently.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lucy Baykus, and I'm at 1007 Clayton Avenue, and I also object to this. As it is written, I think it's looking at our house as if we're all homogenous, and we're not. We've got townhouses, we've got houses that were built in the 90s that are not historic. So I think the urban design overlay would have made more sense to extend that from Clayton over, realizing that would have been more work, but I think it's worth doing right, as opposed to just trying to pull something in that doesn't fit. As my house sits right now, I have a culvert in the backyard, so I cannot expand to the back. I have no room on the side, so I would have no opportunity to take my one and three-four story house to a full two stories if I ever wanted to. I'd have no opportunity to do anything with this overlay, and, you know, that's really limiting, to say that this, this is my biggest investment, I no longer have any opportunity with.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Okay, would people who would like to speak for, please come forward and state your name and address?
My name is Daniel Keyd. My wife and I live at 1107 Clayton Avenue. We've owned the house for a little over 20 years, and are concerned about some of the problems that are going on in the neighborhood, based on houses being knocked down, two and three houses put in their place, and also some very, more than distasteful changes going on in the neighborhood. Starting several months ago, my wife and I went door-to-door and talked to the neighbors, and I think there's some 21 or 22 homes, 28?
28.
28 homes affected. As far as I understand it, the only people that object to it are the two that are here. There are other people that are very much in favor of it, and as far as finding another option for this neighborhood, that, that really is our best option, is to attach to the Belmont-Hillsborough expansion.
Hi, I'm Carla Bowles. I live at 1012 Gale Lane, which runs on the other side of Brown Creek from Clayton Avenue. And the house next door to me was recently demolished, built by the same owner and builder as my house. It was the father of the couple that lived there. We lived there for 30 years. The neighborhood has changed a lot. The houses are very historic. Some of them have been fixed up, added on to. We have added on to our house in the back, trying to keep the character of the neighborhood. But we know that the house next door that was demolished, they're going to put in two tall skinnies, 45 feet tall, on an already, they added 15 feet of dirt, so it's going to be towering over our house. And it's a very narrow lot, with about four feet between the houses, so about all that can show from the street is a garage, and then a front door, and everything then will be in the back and up top. They've torn down two, 200-plus-year-old trees, an elm and an oak, a magnolia, another oak today, we don't know about that one. People moved to this neighborhood because of the character, the trees, the older homes. There are people that do want to buy these homes and fix them up, but developers are offering so much money for the lot, because they can put two houses and get the profit for two houses rather than one. And it's just destroying the character of our neighborhood. So I think most people are in favor, and I serve me in, so I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Tommy Bowles, and I'm also at 1012 Gale Lane. The wonderful Tudor next door to us just got knocked down. It was in great shape, it looked really good, and, and I'd just like to see an end to the opportunity for a developer who doesn't care about the neighborhood, who's not invested in it, to come destroy houses and trees, and so I'm very in favor of this overlay.
Thank you. Are there any others? Okay, councilman, would you like to do a rebuttal or say?
Sure, there's, I wouldn't call it a rebuttal. And I don't know if it'll come up in the notes or not, I think when they brought up, there was 28 homes, there was a question about how many homes were surveyed, or at least how many responses there were. Now, Robin, I don't know if you have those numbers off the top of your head.
I have it by a percentage, 68% contributing.
Right. Oh, I mean.
How many were in favor?
Yes, that's what I mean, yeah.
I'm not sure.
Okay, alright.
But I, I have only, as have you, only heard from two people that are against.
Yeah. I do remember, I've come before this body before, on two different overlay proposals, on Waverly-Belmont and Hillview Heights in Inverness, which was delayed indefinitely. I will say, this effort, there was a much greater percentage of people who responded than Hillview Heights and Inverness. It was, it was much closer to the, very different in size, but much closer to Waverly-Belmont.
Thank you. Okay, closed public hearing, discussion?
I think we, we often, I guess our, some of the public comment, and this comment in general about this, is, to the commission, is whether it's a good idea or not, and I think, to reframe the argument, our determination is, does it meet eligibility requirements? Certainly, we can take under advisement, whether it's popular or not, or, or how that would be determined, but our, our charge is to determine if it's eligible, and the staff certainly does a good job of that, and then further to provide applicable guidelines for the council, then to kind of make the ultimate determination on this. So I guess I just remind ourselves and the gallery of what our charge is here today. I think, in terms of this extension, it's, it's an interesting, on the surface, looking at the map, it seems odd and very linear, which is not, is atypical, but considering the adjacency of Gale Lane as a park, which wouldn't necessarily be contributing or non-contributing, but Sunnyside is, is historic landmark district that's directly adjacent and a landmark in its own right, and that this is sort of tethered to extension along Granny White Pike, I would find certainly that it was appropriate, and that it was connected, and not sort of this gerrymandered district with the big 440 gap between it, you know, that, that linear connection makes some sense.
Okay, thanks, Ben.
I agree with Ben, and really feel that, I'm really glad to see this area apply for a conservation overlay with what seems to be a strong majority. I think the frontage of, on Clayton Avenue, really helps to define and really be part of the historic fabric of the park there, it's so visible, and so having a protection on that, I think will be a very positive, positive move.
Thank you. When we consider these, and we poll the neighborhoods, do we not have to have some sort of a definitive vote for the majority of the homes that are in favor of this? Instead of just gauging, there's two people who've spoken against it, the councilman said he's talked to most of the homes, but what is customary when, when the neighborhood is, is considering this overlay, and what kind of proof do we need before this commission in order to determine that the majority of the homeowners are in favor of this?
And as Commissioner Mosley noted, it's not really your charge to determine whether or not people are in favor, although obviously, you want to take that into account. There is no vote, the ordinance does not require a vote in order to do a zoning change, which this is. Often, though, council members will want some sort of vote, and that's up to them to decide how they want to do that, because they don't want to move forward if it's not something that the majority want. And that's something that Councilman Sledge did, and so your charge today is, does it qualify, does it meet those requirements of the ordinance, more so than whether or not this is something that they want. There's two more steps that they'll have as well, to, to tell decision-makers what they want, and that'll be the public here, hearing at planning, and then of course, the public hearing at council.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll, one more thing to add, and this gets into the specifics of those two folks who are here that are not necessarily in support of it, as it's written, I'll, I'll add, I think we have at least a reasonable history of, in a scenario where what, what stated is, is present on their particular pieces of property, that it seems like there's some, certainly some consideration that would need to be given with, I'm familiar with this, and the way the creek runs through it, and some of the limitations on design, is that the guidelines are, certainly provide some ability for us to consider a hardship that wouldn't, would put one particular homeowner at a severe, or even significant disadvantage to the adjacent property or surrounding properties in the district. Without speaking to the specifics of any case, certainly, I think we've proven in the past that we're willing to consider that there is hardship.
Any more discussion, or, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, given the apparent majority that are in support of this, the councilman's recommendation of this, and the eligibility, by meeting all the criteria, I move for approval.
Okay. Have a, have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. So first, previously deferred items, 300 Broadway.
I keep forgetting that. This request is for signage at 300 Broadway, that includes three wall signs, two projecting signs, and two painted wall signs. All of them meet the design guidelines, with the possible exception of the front wall sign, which covers historic signage. And you'll see, that's the one with a bolder border around it. That signage has floating lettering on a clear lucite background that allows the original signage to show through. Staff recommends approval, finding the project to meet the design guidelines for signage in the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. Did you have any questions for me?
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
I have a question.
Okay. Okay. No comments from the applicant? Open public hearing? Anybody want to speak regarding this project? Closed public hearing, discussion, or motion?
One of the things I liked about this particular approach was the, the leaving the original text on the side of the building, having the lucite so that you could see through it. So that fulfills the Department of Interior requirement, so that if this additional sign was taken off, you could revert back to the original. I think it's a good creative approach to, to retaining that. I move for approval.
Wait, quick question.
I have a motion in second? Any more discussion?
I guess I, I missed the, the one page on a thing, Robin, where it was the lucite. Okay, so what am I looking at on the one below, where it just shows a full sign?
That's around, that's around the corner.
Oh, that's on the, okay.
I did the same thing, I did the same thing you did when I first looked at it.
Because I was like, no.
They look exactly the same, but there are two different sides of the building, and around the corner, you don't have historic signage.
There's no signage on the side, yeah. Okay. That's what I was just making. I missed the first sign.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So the first one, no violations, the actions, 1402 Douglas Avenue.
Okay. 1402 Douglas Avenue is an application for a rear dormer addition. Staff routinely approves rear dormer additions on, when the sidewalls of the dormer are inset two feet from the sidewalls of the house. However, in this condition, in this particular case, the applicant would like to stack the dormer walls over the existing walls, and that requires your approval. So the house at 1402 Douglas is a circa 1930 bungalow, contributes to the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. Here are the side views of the property. And here's the rear. That white-sided portion is likely an enclosed porch. The proposed dormer would terminate above that existing back wall, the recessed yellow brick there. And here is the proposed rear elevation. Staff's only concern regarding the proposal is that the sidewalls are stacked above the main walls of the house. The guidelines state that rear dormers should be inset from the sidewalls of the building by a minimum of, of two feet. The intent of this requirement is to keep the massing of rooftop additions modest. The commission has not previously approved dormers where the walls were not inset. Here's our side elevations. They show that the shed dormer is going to tie in just below the ridge line, so therefore, it's not going to increase the height of the property or be visible from the street. Staff finds the height and location are appropriate. The second-story floor plan shows the addition, it's going to add a bathroom, then a room, there'll be a craft and office room. About 300 square feet of living space are going to be added. The house is currently about 1,950 square feet. So staff finds that the addition is appropriate in terms of size and scale. In conclusion, we recommend approval of the dormer addition with the following condition, that the dormer be inset a minimum of two feet from the sidewalls, and there's one new condition that wasn't in your packet, just that the windows, trim, and roofing material are approved by staff prior to purchase and installation. Any questions?
Thank you for the new condition, bold red.
Bold and red. I believe the applicant is here as well.
Alright, thank you, Jenny. Open public hearing, I mean, first, is the applicant here, would you like to come forward and state your name and address?
Hi, my name is Greg Griffin, 1402 Douglas Avenue. Buried into the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation Zoning, there is a note in there saying that rear additions narrower than 30 feet may be considered for additional width or a possible variance. And that's why I was hoping to be able to stick, to expand these walls out to their current position. That way, the wall would go straight up. I do want to point out that this addition fits entirely within the footprint of the lower floor. I believe it's of a tasteful design, and it's also consistent with other houses in the neighborhood. It maintains alignment of the existing load-bearing structures. The original overhang will remain or be reconstructed, so that there will be a clear delineation of old and new. And then lastly, to reiterate, that for homes narrower than 30 feet, there is a possibility of getting a variance.
Okay. Any questions to the applicant? Alright, thank you. Thank you. Open up public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing, discussion? Any comments about the setback?
I think the architects can probably speak to this, but, and I'm not commenting to yea or nay yet, but on, let's see, what page is that? I think it's on page 10, nine, where it has a figure three side views and west side of house. I find it interesting that the architectural feature, would it look, the new dormer, would it look like that, in terms of, is it consistent with that architecture, structural? Architects, can you speak to that?
The architects, do we look at the drawing, the architect sheet number, or?
Just looking at this.
Ah, photograph.
Ah, photograph.
And, yeah, because I don't know what the, is that called a wall dormer versus?
Are you saying, are you asking if, as the wall comes up?
Right.
Is it to be brick? I don't think they're proposing, I think they're...
They're proposing it to be flush, like that back wall. So my question is, will it have the same structural feature?
Like, maybe?
To the back?
I think you're talking about the back wall. Is that right?
Yeah. Well, the back wall will be new.
Well, the back wall of the dormer will be new.
Right.
But what we're concerned about are the sidewalls, that those should inset two feet. You have required that for several, more than decades, perhaps?
I understand.
And the discussion about buildings being narrower than 30 feet, that's about a footprint of an addition, not, this has nothing to do with the dormer. Again, this is something you've always required, is in order to keep the massing of that addition subordinate to the historic home. Did that answer your question?
Are you asking, are you asking what it looks, you're asking what it looked like?
Yes, yes.
It would be flat like that, yes. Yeah, it wouldn't have a setback.
I mean, I understand that two-foot setback. I'm very clear on that.
Yeah, it'd be all flat like that. As a structural, I guess as a structural argument or analysis, when you stack the sidewall, the brick has a thickness of two and a quarter, plus it's not set right up on the siding, so there would be, there may be, you know, a two-to-three-inch setback, but I think the intent of the guideline previously is that there's something more visual. Structurally, admittedly, having one wall stacked on top of the other is much more easy to construct, and we had that discussion, an argument, I think, or that argument has been presented before. I'm not advocating that we go against what we've previously done.
No.
But that's, yeah, that's the...
Just the clarity of that. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I think just with the rear elevation, like, I understand applicant's argument, but the rear elevation with the dormer going wall-to-wall, it, you know, almost appears to be the two-story house, you know, because it's just flat in the back, not, I know that there's the piece in the deck overlooked, but the massing of it from the rear does appear to be, when there's not an inset. And I guess that's what we've gone off in the past for that look.
Well, I empathize and applaud the applicant for what, compared to some of the other things we see, is a very modest addition to this house. I think our approval and policy is pretty consistent on that, and I don't find it compelling to go against that, just because they're being, my applause doesn't extend necessarily to going against what we've gone for so long.
Is that your, is that a motion?
I can make one. I move approval with the staff recommendation, including the new condition number two of 1402 Douglas Avenue in the Eastwood Conservation Zoning Overlay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. 1312 Third Avenue North.
One monument sign is proposed for 1312 Third Avenue North. It meets the design guidelines in all ways, except that monument signs are only allowed for buildings that's set at least 20 feet from the property line, and this one sets approximately 10 feet from the property line. Staff recommends approval since a monument sign will not have a physical impact on the building, and the residential design of this firehouse does not lend itself well to signage locations. In summary, staff recommends approval of the project as proposed.
For staff? Okay, seeing now, is the applicant here? Would you like to speak regarding this project?
I'm the applicant, but I don't need to speak.
Okay. Okay, for the record, the applicant has no comments. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing now, closed public hearing? Discussion? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 933 Fatherland Street.
933 Fatherland Street is an application to demolish an existing outbuilding and to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit at the rear. The structure requires a rear setback determination from 20 feet to 13 feet, which staff finds to be appropriate. The footprint of the structure is approximately 747 square feet, which meets both the design guidelines and the DADU ordinance. Here's the alley facade. The height, scale, roof form, and materials all meet the design guidelines and the DADU ordinance. I'm sure you're wondering, why are we looking at this? The applicant is proposing an uncovered balcony that is seven feet wide and four feet deep, or 28 square feet. The balcony is supported by brackets. If this balcony is included in the calculation of the footprint, it would push the DADU's footprint over the allotted 750 square feet. Staff recommends that the commission consider creating a policy regarding balconies on outbuildings and DADUs to address situations like this. Staff recommends that the upper-level balconies on outbuildings and DADUs be permitted and not be included in either the footprint square footage for allotment, for the, both the footprint for the dwelling unit and for the square footage allotment for the interior dwelling unit space, if it meets the following criteria: that the balcony is located either facing the principal house or on the rear of the lot. They would not be allowed on the sides facing kind of the side property lines. The out-facing railing meet the base zoning setback, so again, it can't extend it to the setback line if it's facing the alley. The footprint is limited to 30 square feet or less, and that the balcony remain uncovered, and that it does not have posts to the ground, but rather be supported by brackets. So again, the proposed balcony here meets all of those standards, and staff recommends that the commission approve the balcony as a test case and review it again once it's constructed. So once it's been constructed, staff will take a photograph of it and show it to you to see if you want to continue allowing things such as this. And if you do find it to be appropriate, once it's photographed and done, we will add it to the design guidelines as italicized information. So in summary, staff is recommending approval of the DADU with the following conditions: that staff approve the windows and doors; we approve the roof shingle color; that we receive a copy of the filed restrictive covenant prior to issuing the permit; and finally, four, that the balcony be approved as a test case for potential policy for outbuildings and DADUs. With these conditions, we find that the project meets the design guidelines.
So there's no historical other information regarding balconies on, that we pulled from other cities or anything like that, or?
Yes, that was developed, looking at what other cities have done. Not a lot of them allow balconies. Not a lot of them have very clear direction, but there were several cities that had some really good direction, and so this is somewhat based on what they have done.
Okay, so this was definitely a conservative effort. Okay. Any other questions to staff?
This one, this is in the weeds, but I'll ask it anyways. Oftentimes, when we're approving a DADU, especially in historic districts, we're considering setbacks, and so I guess the smart applicant, if they wanted their building 10 feet from the alley, would apply for a less-than-10-foot application. That's kind of the game that we're, I guess, that we'll be playing here, and that an applicant would consider or should consider, is they...
Well, in this case, because the zoning setbacks get complicated, because we allow for footprints up to 750 square feet, but they divided it 700 square feet, so less than 700 square feet, this would meet the base zoning setbacks. But because it's more than 700 square feet, 747, that extra 47 square feet, the zoning code says it should be 20 feet into the rear yard, which we typically would rather push it closer to the alley, and so would applicant, so it's pretty common for us to be, you know, to reduce it, if that answers your question.
It does. I think in this case, in this application, I don't want to speak before we're supposed to speak about it. This is, in terms of proportion and all those things, there's plenty of space between the existing residents and this.
Yes, yes.
If it were flipped, and towards the alley, I'm not sure it's egregious in any way, but I'm thinking of previous cases where, you know, you've got somebody who is just meeting 20 feet between the garage and the house.
Right.
And if it were most appropriate for this to kind of cantilever over, and is it, I'm curious how we might decide if the house needs to be smaller or the DADU, you know, it pushes those setbacks back and forth. There's some other scenarios where I think most DADUs would be developed with the balcony as opposed to without, and so if, would you say if this house were within 20 feet of the structure, the DADU proper, would it be appropriate to have a balcony into that 20 feet?
I think that's a really good point, and this current policy is suggesting that that be considered for the rear setback, so I think we could just add in that that should also be considered for that 20-foot, that that's considered the outside edge of that building, and they still need that 20 feet in between the two. And then, of course, it doesn't allow on the sides, so the side setbacks won't come into place, but I think that's a good point.
Thinking of a hardship case where we had even less than 20 feet, and if given the opportunity, you know, it'd just be one, yet one more ask, this isn't that hard to decide on, but in some of those other cases, when we open the door, certainly we'd run into those things.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, thanks.
The applicant is here.
Yes. If the applicant would like to come forward and state your name and address?
My name's Jacob Hill. I'm 933 Fatherland Street. And if you have any questions?
Any questions to the applicant?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing now, closed public hearing? Do we have a discussion, moment of discussion or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Okay, have a motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. 1516 Ordway Place.
Before I do the presentation, I just want to make sure that everybody received a printed-out hard copy of comments from council member Withers in support of this project. If not, I can pass, I have extras. So 1516 Ordway Place is an application to construct a mixed-use development on a vacant lot at the corner of 16th Street and Ordway Place. The development of the site is bound by a specific plan adopted in 2009. Although the SP allows for up to six residential units with a commercial space, the applicant is proposing four residential units and a commercial space in this design. In 2009, the Historic Zoning Commission approved a two-story infill that met the parameters of the SP zoning. That development was never constructed, and the same owner is returning for consideration of a new and very similar development. Here are some photos of the site, so you can see it's at the corner of 16th and Ordway Place. The lot does drop fairly significantly from Ordway down to the rear, which will allow them to get some underground parking in the development. The proposed development will be the setbacks set forth in the SP zoning. It will sit close to the property line on both Ordway and 16th Street, which is appropriate for a mixed-use commercial building like this one. The project will have attached parking at the basement level, and the parking will be accessed via the alley off of 16th Street. Here are the front elevations, so the applicant has helpfully included both what was approved in 2009 and what is under consideration right now, so you can see those there, they're labeled. The height of the proposed structure has not changed since 2009 and is approximately 26 feet at the front. The design's major elements, including a chamfered corner, entry to the commercial space, a second-story balcony, and the fenestration pattern have not significantly changed since 2009. Here are the front, I'm sorry, here are the 16th Street side elevations from both 2009, 2017. The entry to the residential units is on the 16th Street facade, kind of, not quite in the middle, but a little bit down the street from Ordway. The infill will primarily be clad in brick, and staff recommends approval of a brick sample prior to purchase and installation. The 16th Street entry area will be clad in cement-fiber board panels, and the lintels and sills and the brick portions of the infill will be cast stone. Staff finds that all the known materials are appropriate. Here is the side facade that faces the interior of the lot. And here's the rear facade facing the alley. Again, you can see the attached parking. And just here are some context photos. Directly across the street is the Sweet 16 Bakery, which I'm sure many of you know. It's, other than the Sweet 16 Bakery, the other corners do have houses on them. The top photo is the catty corner from the site, and the bottom photo is a commercial structure kind of behind Sweet 16, across the street from the site, on 16th Street. So here's just one last look at the rendering. And in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the infill with the condition that staff approve the finished floor height. We approve all windows and doors, a brick sample, a stone sample, the awning material, railing material, the driveway and walkway materials, and the location of the HVAC units and other utilities. With these conditions, staff finds that the proposed infill meets the design guidelines for Lockland Springs.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, thanks, Melissa. Is the applicant here? Would you like to come forward and state your name and address?
Good afternoon. My name is Mark West. I'm an architect representing the applicant, Mr. Ammon. He is traveling today, or else he would have been here. He asked me to attend in his stay. We don't have any questions or comments, but we're happy to respond to any questions from the commission.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing now, closed public hearing? Discussion?
No, no.
Motion?
Unless there is any discussion, I move approval of 1516 Ordway as meeting the design guidelines. I move approval with staff recommendation of 1516 Ordway meeting the Lockland Springs East End Conservation Overlay.
Okay. We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
All right. This image here shows 909 Benton Avenue, which is currently a vacant lot. There was a historic home on the lot that was lost to a fire a little bit before the adoption of the Conservation Zoning Overlay. And proposed is a new, single-story house with a front gabled roof and a partial width porch, and this is a common form similar to many homes in the neighborhood. The height of the new house will be approximately 25 feet, excuse me, and the width will be 38 feet, and these are compatible with the scale of historic houses in the area as well. Infill is typically required to have the foundation and floor light consistent with surrounding historic houses, so staff would ask to verify the floor height with an inspection of the foundation before framing begins. The exterior materials on the new house will include a brick veneered foundation, cement-fiber siding, and an asphalt shingle roof. These materials are compatible with historic houses, and the window materials are not known at this time, but the rhythm and proportion of windows are also consistent with historic houses. There's the right elevation. The submitted plans show a front yard parking pad. The area does have side yard driveways that are common, leading from the street to the rear yards to access driveways or parking or garages, and that was a condition of the house that stood on this lot previously, a side yard driveway. There do not appear to be any front yard parking pads, independent of a driveway. So staff recommends that a front parking pad be omitted. There would not be room to extend it beyond the house. So staff would recommend that a parking pad is omitted and that a walkway connects the front porch to the street. And a couple of quick pictures of the surrounding area. The house next door is shown to the right, and directly across the street, other gable, form, one-story, one-and-a-half-story houses. Staff finds the proposal to be compatible and recommends approval of the proposed new construction at 909 Benton Avenue, with the conditions that setbacks are verified with a staking inspection prior to construction; height of the foundation and floor level is verified with an inspection during construction; that any unknown materials, including windows and doors, and the materials of rear deck and roof color, are approved administratively; that the front yard parking pad is eliminated; and that HVAC and... that the front yard parking pad is eliminated, and that HVAC and other utility connections are behind the midpoint of the house or on the rear. If all those conditions are met, staff finds this project will meet the guidelines for new construction in the Waverly Belmont Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Any questions for Sean? All right, thank you, sir.
And there is an applicant here.
Okay, and would the applicant like to come and state your name and address?
I'm Mike Carey. I work for Drews Homes. Mr. Bellamy is our customer. He's owned the lot for 30-plus years. He wants to build his home to, to live there. As Mr. Alexander said, the previous home that was there was destroyed by fire. We have, have already worked on removing the front parking pad and there's an alley in the back, so there's no problem to run the driveway there. Materials, as Mr. Alexander said, we're, we're good with all that. So unless you have any further questions, I don't have anything further.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing an enclosed public hearing. Discussion? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So the, the other business we have is revisions to the rules of order and procedure?
The, in the staff report, you have a full copy of the rules of order and procedure and the section we're proposing to add sections are underlined, so you can find them quickly. But essentially, what we'd like to do is add to that list of obje-, or applications that staff can issue administrative permits for, dados that meet all the requirements of the ordinance. Initially, there was a, a policy to include all dados on the agenda, because when we first started this in 2011, 2012, we weren't sure how this would go and how they'd really work in the neighborhoods, but it seems to be that people are fairly comfortable with them. And since they meet all the requirements, the requirements are pretty black and white, maybe that's just something that everyone could get a quick permit on. Also, another thing that has been fairly ubiquitous is to move those outbuildings towards the back of the lot. So rather than bring that setback determination to you every time, and you will see, not this agenda necessarily, but most of our agendas, we have a whole lot of outbuildings on consent, because the only reason they're coming to you is because they need that setback determination. Since that is something that you do routinely, we're recommending just adding that into the rules of order and procedure, so those don't have to come to you every time as well. So even if an outbuilding meets all the requirements, but, except for that setback, but they meet that five-foot setback if they have garage doors facing the alley, or three feet if they do not, then they could also receive an administrative permit. Both of these things just allow people to get moving faster on their project, get permits more easily, and it also is more efficient use of staff time.
You have a question, or?
Question directed to legal. Maybe incorrectly recalling, but I seem to recall that some extra weight was stated by somebody who knows better than I do, maybe it was a council member or somebody who was a past council member, would be given to determining a setback as opposed to our interpreting a design guideline. Is that an accurate statement or are they pretty much one and the same in terms of allow? I don't disagree with this and certainly don't want to junk up our agendas if somebody, we pretty, pretty regularly approve those things, but I just, before we make this rules change.
What was your question?
Is there any more, the fact that a setback determination is a base zoning item and that we're making adjustment to that base zoning item, does that carry more weight than any other guideline that we might administer or consider or give the staff the ability to approve at the staff level as meeting the guidelines?
No, I mean, I think this just gives the staff an additional tool as, you know, we have their rules that state what they can administratively approve, and this is really just giving them an additional tool. Another way to look at it is the ordinance allows you to determine the appropriate setbacks for every individual property. So what you're doing is, if you want this in this rules of order and procedure, you are deciding that this is today, that this is what the setback is, rather than doing it every single time for each individual one.
I think it's a good idea. Any other questions?
Robin, did Councilwoman Allen's memo address this particular issue at all?
No, I don't, I don't believe, my interpretation, I don't want to speak for someone else. My understanding is that she was fine with the change to the rules of order and procedure. Again, that's my understanding of her email.
Okay.
Do you think she was referring to the one that got cut from the agenda?
Most definitely was referring to that one.
Okay.
And also, if this is, if we approve this, we could also undo it if there were some objection to it.
Would it be italicized?
This is not an amendment to, this is an amendment to your rules of order and procedure, not to the design guidelines, and there are not any italicized portions in your rules.
Okay.
Although, you know, we could add them as italicized just to make it clearer for applicants. To give them that guidance, yeah.
Would, we're getting maybe way too deep in this, but I think previously, if there were an item that were not being heard and approved at staff level, no notice would be given as to the meeting, which is currently given even if for an item on consent?
Correct, because what they're doing is by right, so no notice is required.
I think therein lies, what my question was getting to a little bit earlier, is that, again, I think, I'm for allowing the, the staff to do something that, of course, we've done for a long time and have not, seem to have any significant problems with. I just want to keep us from, from doing something we maybe shouldn't do or that a neighbor might get excited about in, in the future if they were given no notice and that we would get ourselves into trouble, but we can always undo it, I guess.
Okay. We have a motion? Oh, I guess I, I open public hearing, but seeing an enclosed public hearing. Okay. Have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Okay, have a motion. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. And I, we're gonna just have some discussion about the building signage and illumination.
Just to give a little background, on Monday, we hosted a charrette regarding building and signage illumination, specifically colored building illumination and bare bulbs on signage. The following commissioners attended, Vice Chair Bell, Caitlin Jones, Elizabeth Mayhall, Ben Mosley, Cyril Stewart. There were five presenters who gave information about best practices in lighting technology and approximately 11 members of the public participated. Obviously, this having just happened, we don't have any kind of policy for you to discuss, but we thought we'd go ahead and put it on the agenda in case there's anything you wanted to discuss about how it went, if there's any direction you wanted to give to staff. You may want some time to think about it. You can email that to us later as well. Just wanted it here in case there was anything you wanted to discuss at this point.
Well, I thought it was a fascinating charrette and I enjoyed listening to all the presenters and I thank you very much for putting it on. The one thing that I'm coming out of, of this with is being fair to everybody on the street and making sure that if we approve something for one, that we're prepared to approve it for everybody. And, and we all know, you know, the issue is 300 Broadway and the red light's going up. And I just had a vision of what it would look like if we turned Broadway red. And, and I just, that's just, I'm uncomfortable with that. I don't know if it's proper for me to, but that's, that's what my takeaway from the charrette. And I don't know if it's proper for me to be explaining my, my viewpoint on it, but, but that was my takeaway. And I, I thank you very much for putting it on. It was very well, well done. Thank you.
And this format is totally proper. We're just discussing. For me personally, I guess I, I just, whenever the actual report is set, it'll be when I'd comment on it, just to see kind of what, after the charrette and after you guys have had a chance to really study through it, then be able to better, you know, comment on it.
I think that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just real quick for that, I think the takeaway on that as well is that in terms of the Secretary of the Interior standards and the way other cities have looked at lighting, it was really helpful to see, you know, Denver and the, did I pronounce that right? New Orleans, the Vucre, yeah. And how there were, you know, the considerations for neon and colors and things like that, but the way consistency has been, it's that it's, you know, more clear, clear light, not colored light. And I think I'm a little bit more clear on how those guidelines can be interpreted in, in our case, especially on Broadway. And we do have a lot of activity on Broadway and I know some of the things that were commented was how would we, would decreasing the opportunity for light decrease the opportunity for commercialism? Heard that. And, you know, that's, that's not our charge, whether we do commercialism or not, but I think that's a perfect example there where you have so much light that, and again, specific to different cities, I think, again, my takeaway was that it is contextual to where you're, what area of towns you're looking at. And we, and Nashville also have, you know, very different areas that, the Arcade or Printer's Alley, you know, so we're, we're viewing those in different, in different sites. So, yeah, that was really helpful. So thank you, staff and, and Robin, for getting the people to comment on that, professionals, actually. So that was helpful.
I think it was a very worthwhile charrette and I really appreciated seeing the comparison with other peer cities and what the regulations were that had been developed. It was pretty clear from that, though, that many of those regulations were developed in a time when lighting technology was different and lighting approaches are different in cities. And given that most of our lighting issues come up in the lower Broadway area, which is in some ways closer to lower Broadway than, you know, a place like the mall in Washington, DC, I think it is an opportunity for us to, in essence, plow some unplowed ground, to really look at something that could be a standard that, that could be used in other places as well. I, I do know that some people have offered to give us images and ideas on this. It is a time where we're collecting information, so I think that's a, it's a great opportunity to be able to hear from others that have thoughts and opinions about this as we make this consideration.
Something Cyril to add to that that came out of the, the meeting is, there, there are few historic examples, or examples of exterior lighting, colored exterior lighting, at least that were presented to us of places, I guess, you consider similar, whether they have a historic, whether they're included in a historic district or not, that might be worth some analysis or at least just some visual analysis if, if, if that exists. And that would be helpful. I also seem to think that many of the examples were given were civic buildings that apart, that on their own were, perhaps should be treated differently, or at least an argument could be made that they would become less significant if, if something were, were open to all, but not necessarily. Las Vegas comes to mind as a place that's certainly not historic, well, most of it not historic or, or maybe worthy of preservation, at least right now. And that, that, that seems to be a place where you could see a lot of this technology at work, but perhaps it's, we may find that it's not applicable to this particular district in, in terms of meeting the standard.
The struggle we've had is that so far, we haven't found any districts that allow for colored lighting. As you pointed out, there may be historic landmarks that have it, that are, that are monolithic buildings, you know, on, in their own setting, not narrow buildings within a row. There are two cities that have really good thorough guidelines in terms of lighting the building, and that is Denver and the Vucre, but again, we haven't found anyone that allows for colored lighting. For those cities that do allow for some sort of building lighting, they don't allow for the type of signage we do in terms of the size and the amount of neon that we do. So we are very different and we'll have to look at it in a different way.
Just looking at this image that's on the screen, I think, something I had not considered before is the, you know, it's not a historic building, but that is certainly in the, adjacent to the district, is, is the uplighting of Spire at the, at Bridgestone Arena. And then further up, I believe that's Customs House, that is, I think this image puts it towards the green hue, but that may be just a bulb selection, not, not a green LED or, or neon image there. So I, but I had not considered that in, in terms of this district and maybe what already exists or what, you know, kind of, I guess, to this point had not been previously or considered or by right was already done.
I do think one of the opportunities that we have here is actually to enhance the photograph that you see in the image that's there now. One of the things we did in Franklin as part of the Heritage Foundation and the Downtown Merchants Association was to, during the Christmas festival, the Dickens of a Christmas, to really light up both internally and some externally, the second and third floors of the main street buildings. And what you see in this image is, you know, the, the only image that you see of the upper floors is whatever's visible from the sign, light that spills out. It is amazing how a place is transformed when you do have the appearance of two- and three-story buildings, as opposed to all the lighting happening at the first level and on the signs. So I think if we find an appropriate way to do that, certainly not outlining or any of those things, but, but there are ways to do that that really do enhance the, the feel of a neighborhood in a district like this.
I'm sorry, was that, again, but was there a different, a differential made between signage and the, the lighting of the building itself?
Yes, what we did was we talked primarily about building lighting, which you, which the guidelines already allow for. So there was an emphasis on colored lighting. And then in terms of signage, there was a discussion about allowing bare bulbs on signage, which right now you don't.
So there's a difference between the two?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I just like, would, would like to contend that having lived and worked in this area for the last 30 years, I am delighted that the upper floors are starting to get developed. And, and I think that with that development and activity going on, on the third and second floor, there will be light coming from there. And so this, this is just something to, to really, for us to grapple with and, and, and see, but, but I do, you're right, we still have a lot of second and third floors that aren't, that aren't occupied, but I have a feeling within the next five years, if not sooner than that, they'll all be occupied with rooftops and, and so, anyway, I just...
I just, I mean, to Cyril's point, I'm sure the downtown Franklin, you know, is probably a concerted effort. Everyone, you know, uniformity was key, everybody was together, but this is a situation, to me, individual business owners will have their own choice. You know, if one building is bright red, you know, one building is gonna immediately want to be purple. We all know what those are. That, just that, you know, looking at this scape with, I mean, I love the bright signs, honestly, I do, and, you know, the bare bulbs doesn't bother me personally. I think, you know, with the new technology, it could, it might, should be, you know, an aspect of design that they can, that they can go for. But with the, the building illumination and the colors, I just, with everything being so skinny and just the ability, perhaps, for each owner to have their own color, that's what I keep thinking about personally, you know, in looking at this image. And then, so it's the signage colors, the large signs that we allow for, plus building illumination and colors, it's just, you know, where's, where's, where's it gonna stop?
Right. That's what I'm saying. We have four red buildings that are white.
Yeah, or just, I mean, you know, you know, I mean, look, you know, Brew House, they're blue, they're- They're going to want to-- oh, well, we want to be blue, because they're red, and they're purple, and they're yellow. I just, you know, what's the line? Is there a line? What is the line? And I just, that's, you know, if it was, you know, Christmas, everyone's red. Oh, lovely, that would be great. But we can't-- I don't think we can force building owners to choose a color, you know, if it's not something that they bought into for a special event. So if it's year-round, they always have this opportunity. You know, I know there was a discussion of not changing colors all the time, but if they all choose one color, and they're all different colors, what does that look like for the streetscape? That's why.
Just another comment on those bare bulbs, because we do get, you know, that review at times. And it is interesting that because of technology, it's much better. You can get acrylics and not glass, and it's historic. So, you know, when somebody comes to us, and it's an historic overlay, that we might consider that, you know? And what would be those guidelines for a product like that, you know? So.
I do think one possible thing to consider, you know, and obviously, we're not making any decisions, but one thing that we could consider is that we have seen the power of celebration in this town and other towns. You know, the recent Predators, you know, run was pretty amazing. And so I think that if colored lights were allowed, one way to do that might be to say that they would be allowed in conjunction with a citywide or national celebration. So red, white, and blue for, you know, Fourth of July, the Predators come in, maybe it's gold, but I think that--
Everything turns blue and orange, and then everything turns red, green, and--
It might be a way to do some uniformity, and then have white as the reversion for the rest of the year.
We can coordinate it with the Bridge.
Thanks for your discussion. Anything else we need to cover, Robin?
No, I think that's it. I would just remind anyone who's watching and listening that they can also email comments to us, robin.zeigler@nashville.gov, and you guys can as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Oh, there, I'm sorry, there's one other thing.
And we have a new attorney with-- this is Juan Foul. He's new to Metro Legal. This is just his second day, but he is not a new attorney. He came from the Memphis Public Defender's Office. So he will be taking over my position here, and this is officially my last meeting.
Welcome to the shortest meeting ever.
My shortest meeting ever.
Don't get used to the--
Sorry.
Well, Macy, we are going to miss you. You have big, you know--
Thank you. And good luck.
Thank you.
Before we know it, just when we get started, but yeah, it's been great. But welcome. We did a nice, easy agenda for you for your first one, so we'll save the best for next meeting. Okay, with that, we are adjourned.